I'm live.
I'm on YouTube.
All right.
Who's scraping around with papers and stuff? Would you please mute yourself?
Hate me.
Madam City Clerk?
We're not on YouTube, Madam City Clerk.
This is.
We are.
This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, May 19th. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance, our invocation led by Council President Levon Manzi, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we come thanking you for this day, for our life, for health and strength, asking that you would continue to bless us, touch those that have been impacted by this COVID-19 pandemic. Bless the city of Mobile, the state of Alabama, the United States, and this entire world, as we do need a special touch from your hand. Asking you to look down upon Mayor Stevenson, the members of this council, and all of our citizens. Allow the things that we do to be both beneficial to your people and, most importantly, pleasing in thy sight. These are the blessings we ask. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic. For which it's free. One nation, under God. Into the. With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daye.
Here.
Councilmember Rich. Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Mister, Mister President.
What's all this?
Yes, sir. As I, as I scroll through here, I see a lot of people who are not muted, who are not talking. And I, it would sure help.
We're gonna have anyone participating that is not actively speaking. If you could mute your device. Cause we're getting a lot of interference and it's no doubt coming from somebody who isn't actively speaking. Beyond actively speaking, please mute your device. I thank you. Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
In response to national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Alabama Open Meetings Act and the government's governor's supplemental emergency proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are all in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at City Hall. In keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is able to observe the meeting through their live stream. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the city. The public is still able to present comments to the council by emailing them to cityclerk@cityofmobile.org up to 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Public comments, which will be acknowledged as received during the meeting, distributed to council members and included in the meeting minutes. As always, the meeting is livestreamed and can be viewed through the city's website or on the council's Facebook page. Thank you for joining us and thank you for your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of May 12th.
So move.
Second.
We're probably moving second in the discussion. Just want to commend, as always, great recollection of the minutes and presentation. Thank you for outstanding job. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Morning. First bit of news I have is very exciting news, especially in these challenging times. And that is that Airbus announced this morning that they've officially begun production of the A220 in their new 270,000 square foot foul in Mobile. The first plane will be delivered to JetBlue in the fourth quarter of this year. But the first one to roll off the assembly line and come out of the new foul is just now happening. So it's great news to know that they're continuing on. Another, just coronavirus update. Our testing capacity continues to increase primarily, I think, because of the testing that's being done by Synergy Labs. The comments were made early in the pre-council meeting that we shouldn't be lulled to sleep, that the virus is still out there. It's still impacting about 30 people per day is what the average has been. And so I find it, when I say 30 people per day, the information that I see every day, where I can count, where we can count it on a daily basis, comes from the Synergy Labs. So we're, they are not doing 100% of the testing. But the number of tests that they are running on a daily basis, which for the last week, they were running, let's see, 541 tests per day. Only 30 people per day, you know, according to their records, you know, are being infected or showing for shedding the virus. So a lot of people still going on, so we still can't drop our guard. Later today, we will send you an update on the report having to do with Ignite Mobile, which will tell you all the information we have on everybody that has thus applied, you know, for the stimulus and what, what, what the status of the payment is to them. So that will be coming to you from Anitra and that will be happening sometime after this morning. Well, probably maybe right after lunch. Then also it was very exciting to see some of our businesses starting to reopen. I know that they're excited and we're excited. So let's just hope that they continue to proceed with caution and hoping for a good outcome for everybody.
Mister President.
Mister Williams.
Mister Mayor, thank you for that report. By my calculation, quick calculation, it's about 5% of those tested at Synergy. And realize it's just synergy. Is that just medical now? Or we, are we still doing those who are symptomatic and called in and get appointments from infirmary or?
So right now, Director Barber's listening, he can correct me. But my understanding is, is that the rules have been relaxed. You know, we were really at the very beginning, we were only testing very sick people. And then that's slightly relaxed over a period of about three weeks. But starting about a week or 10 days ago, we started testing people who were having elective surgery at the hospitals. And so that is one reason why we've seen a declining positive rate based on the number of people tested. So that's where we stand today. So we are testing people in those two categories. If you're symptomatic or if you're having elective surgery.
Right, and that's a declining positive rate. Is it 5%? That's, uh, that's certainly something to recognize and hopefully that we can keep it down there and below that.
So tomorrow morning, in lieu of the Unified Command having a conference call, the, everyone that's involved with the collection of data and testing with the Mobile County Health Department and with Synergy Labs with the county, with our team, we will, we will be meeting to review all the data, to look at where we see some discrepancies and to see if we can't plug those holes to make sure that all of our data is accurate. You've seen in other states where, I mean, it's a challenge to get all this data correct because our public health system, department, state department and local, you know, they were not really geared up to have the personnel to track all this. But I think that we're doing better than we were. And I think that after tomorrow's meeting, we'll even be doing better than, than we are today. So I'm very excited about that.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Any further inquiries of Mayor Stevenson?
Yeah, Mister President.
Mister Gregory.
As we continue on with this, Mayor, and you might find out more tomorrow that would answer this question. But as far as testing and the number of cases that have been diagnosed, you know, we continue to see more cases being diagnosed in Mobile County. We're still a hotspot here. Is there a way to show where these hotspots are? I saw some information, I guess it was last week, that South Mobile County is where a lot of these hotspots are now. But, you know, people still want to know, you know, why do we keep having so many more of these cases? Why does the, you know, why do the numbers keep going up? And, you know, are we able to track, you know, how all this is, is happening and where these people are, I guess, interacting with others sort of thing?
So the health department is now, my understanding is they're calling everybody that's testing positive, trying to connect dots on, you know, what's the spread of the transmission of the disease. I think going forward, the limiting factor is going to be the HIPAA-related information that probably the health department can't put out. But there is a threshold, is my understanding, is that once it reaches a certain threshold from a zip code standpoint, you know, they, they have a zip code map that you can see where the certain number of people in a zip code compared to other zip codes. Now that's, that's somewhat helpful, but I know that now they are talking with the GIS department, our GIS department, to help the health department understand in closer proximity than just a zip code, you know, where the cases are. I'm not sure at this point in time how much of that information can be given to the public, but that's some of the stuff that we'll be working through in the next couple of days.
Any, any further questions or concerns relative to this subject, this topic?
Richardson, trying to say something.
Cut you, unmute, there we go, Mister Richardson.
Yes, I was saying that in reference to Gina's comment. So far, the record showed 15,435 people have been tested. The reason they keep going up is because we have 413,000 people in, in Mobile County. 413,000 people. We've only tested 15,435. So as we keep on with the testing, more people are going to show up. As long as we keep testing, we're going to find more people.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments relative to this particular subject, Mayor? You're back on mute, Councilman Richardson.
It doesn't show, I bet I'm on mute.
Okay, you, you're not now. Madam City Clerk? Was that all your announcements, Mister Mayor?
Sir.
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
So move. Second.
Been properly moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Essential COVID-19 items held over. 34012, ordinance to amend the city's business license code to exempt persons offering parking space on private property within a one-mile radius of Ladpeople Stadium from obtaining a business license.
So move.
Now, second.
Been properly moved in second, any discussion?
I would like to make a motion that it, that it, that the ordinance be amended to adopt the revised version.
Second.
Properly moved in second, that ordinance be amended to adopt the revised version. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please.
Mister Williams.
I just want to clarify, I think, that this will be, it'll be a seven-day window when people can, can see this before it actually goes into effect. Can we, can we have that? Do we know where, is it going to be posted on the website? And is that commentary of a seven-day period before it goes into effect?
Mister Allen.
It goes into effect upon its publication. Y'all publish in the newspaper or you post it on?
Publish in the newspaper.
As soon as it's published in the newspaper, it'll go into effect.
What, what would that timeframe be? Tomorrow?
The earliest would most probably be Friday, since the paper only runs a couple of days a week.
Okay.
Well, can we publish it in LandYap?
Um, LandYap, you know, same thing, they only publish one time a week.
Okay.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we'll go back to the original item, I'm assuming.
Right.
There's been a motion and a second, end of discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have passes.
If there are no further objections, I'll take the remaining items together.
Yes, ma'am.
17013, ordinance to amend Chapter 17 of the city code to approve the new flood map as required by FEMA. 01342, authorize an inter-agency agreement with the Alabama Department of Human Resources for funding for summer youth employment. 088343, approve purchase order to Samsung Equipment for Street Sweeper. 08344, approve purchase order to CDW Government for backup recovery appliance. 21345, authorize three-year service contract with Cone for elevators and escalators service and preventative maintenance at various City of Mobile locations. 21346, authorize contract with Goodwood Mills and K Woods for Langin Park drainage repairs, playground area. 21347, authorize one-year service contract with Morale Contracting doing business as Advanced Service Plus Plumbing Company for plumbing services at various city facilities. 21348, authorize contract with Shaw Contract Flooring Services for sports turf for Herndon Sage Park Synthetic Turf Athletic Field Maintenance. 25349, grant two easements to Alabama Power Company to remove guy wires and install poles in Tricentennial Park and replace poles in the Shadow Gate subdivision. 31350351, authorizing grants, assistance to firefighters grant program with a 10% match and fire prevention and safety grant with a 5% match. 31352, authorize grant application to the J.L. Bentzel Foundation for the National Maritime Museum.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Essential COVID items?
Mister President?
Yes, sir.
I move that the items contained under Section 10, Essential COVID-19 Items, be declared Essential COVID-19 Items.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Essential COVID-19 Items, 21354 through 6359.
Is, is 359 the, the, the resolution supporting the executive order?
Yes, it is.
Then I would move that, um, we rave that, um, we take up 31359 for immediate consideration, lay the council rules and the remainder lay over one week. Pursuant to council rules.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
6359, ratify and endorse the mayor's order to suspend certain rules and regulations to allow additional seating for restaurants and bars and rights of way and parking lots.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
Mister President, I'd just like to ask a question. I've approached this by sending a text to Mister Barber and the mayor. But while we're trying to help, and I think this is a valiant effort to try to help those that are, that have been immensely hurt by this COVID virus and will continue to be for some time. But I've been, I was just, somebody was watching this morning and said, well, what about the people who come in and dine in our facilities and leave? And we're told that MPD can't do anything. I'd just like to see if Mister Barber or someone would like to address if that is true and if so, how do we go about making it so that we can help them with, with known people that have left without paying their bill?
Yeah, Councilman Williams, I can address that. There's, I guess, several situations we run into at restaurants. And one of them is the situation where they walk out on their ticket. I think that might be what you're referring to. If we can identify that individual, it's up to the, the owner, the manager of the restaurant to actually sign that warrant. And so that, that would be how we proceed. A lot of times, we also run into disputes between the customer and the management of the facility. And that would be to where they've received their food, it's not what they ordered, they're, they don't like the way it was prepared or something like that. And then there's no serious consumption of that meal. That's not a criminal violation, it's more a person-to-person dispute or tort-type issue. And so we do not get involved in. But if there is considerable consumption of that, it could lead to criminal violations. And Ricardo's here as well, he wants to chime in. But I believe that's how we handle it.
Okay. That's clear enough for right now.
I'd just like to ask, who would be the arbiter of considerable consumption?
But you know, I think that's going to be, and again, I think that if you've eaten most of that meal and you're refusing to pay for it just because you didn't like the meal, you know, I think the officer then becomes witness to the fact that considerable consumption had happened and that it was what you ordered. And so we would do a report in that case. It would be up to the establishment to pursue criminal charges. It would be up to a judge to determine, I guess, the considerable consumption of food.
One of the problems there is that generally the bill comes after the meal has been taken from the table. And you don't know that you're going to get stiffed. And here is a, here's a waitress and a, and an owner of a restaurant that we've already recognized that have been tremendously hurt financially by this and they're hanging on. And somehow, we just, if someone goes into Bells, I don't know, and, and takes a suit or, you know, any other retail establishment, takes something and walks out, then we, then we, we assist. And I just don't see why that's different with a restaurant initially. I, I understand the logic, but the proof is tough to come by.
Mister President, and again, in, in the situation you're discussing, it's where they walk out on the bill. Basically, they've eaten the meal, they've gotten the services, and then they slip out the door. In that case, that is a, a crime at that point. And so there, there is recourse criminally if the owner wants to pursue that. But there's still the identification of who those people were. May require surveillance video, some work by the police, but in order to identify those individuals. And, but the prosecution of that would be up to the owner or the restaurant managers.
They need to take a picture of the partially consumed meal if they're going to remove it from the table.
No, if they, if they're just walking out on that meal, that, that completely is a different situation. If it's a dispute over the food as far as it being prepared wrong or maybe something they didn't order, or maybe it was undercooked, overcooked, and they don't really consume most of that meal, then that, that is not a criminal matter and by the police eyes, you know, that's a dispute between the restaurant and the customer.
Understood, thank you, appreciate that. Didn't mean to take so much time, appreciate y'all.
Mister President?
Mister Richardson?
While we, while we are talking about this, I've had numerous of people to call my office to say that they went to the police department to swear out a warrant against an individual and they refused to allow them to swear out a warrant. I want the chief to comment on that. When, when, at, at what time would you, would your department refuse to allow our citizens to swear out a warrant?
The police department doesn't issue warrants. We don't hear the case, we don't refuse a warrant. That actually happens in front of a magistrate and it'll either happen in front of a city magistrate on municipal cases or in front of a county magistrate on the state cases. We merely furnish the report, especially in crimes in which we did not witness and their misdemeanors. And so that's where the magistrate has to weigh the probable cause that it is a criminal offense kind of goes to Councilman Williams, that was a considerable consumption of food, that they attempted to leave, or was it just a dispute over the manner in which the food was prepared? So again, not, not a police function, that is a magistrate function.
So where, where, where would the magistrate, if, if they wanted to swear out a warrant, where would they go?
To the city magistrate and they would get a, an appointment to come in and swear out that warrant. Now, there's another situation where if the perpetrator is on the scene and they want to follow the officer to the magistrate's office, we'll transport the, the perpetrator along with the complainant and let him sign the warrant there and make the arrest.
Where is the magistrate office located?
At 200? 200 Government Street.
Okay.
Right across the street from the courthouse.
Yes, I got you, I didn't, I didn't know it. Okay.
Mister President? Mister President?
Mister Vice President?
Uh, thank you. This question is for Director Barber, just for, just of general knowledge. Are there many complaints about people walking out at restaurants and not paying for food? I mean, what, what's the percentage of complaints?
I would say they're relatively rare. I think a lot of restaurants just kind of write that off. I don't, I don't know that it occurs that frequently. It'd probably be up to restaurants to tell us how frequently it occurs. But since it's usually a small amount of money, a small amount that, that they've lost and they probably do not know the identities of the people that walked out, they probably are not calling the police in a lot of these cases. But, I mean, we can try to run those numbers for you, Councilman, if you want me to. But I don't really hear that many calls go out to that effect.
Thank you. Mister Preston?
Mister Dave's?
In an effort to return our attention to the ordinance, to the, to the resolution before us, what we're voting on includes the extra 30 days, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
Is that true, Chris, or is it dependent on the mayor's order? Have we seen a written order changing that?
We put the 30-day shall be implemented, 30-day language in the resolution and the mayoral, mayoral order has been amended. I don't know if he signed it yet, though.
But it's not, it's not based on the, see, I haven't not seen the actual ordinance that, that we substituted or, you know, I just want to make sure that it, it was in our resolution. But it's just a resolution. If the mayor decides.
It's in your resolution.
It's in our resolution. But if the mayor decides he really doesn't want to go 30 days afterwards, that resolution is just, um, just a suggestion at this point, is that correct?
I think the mayor's already said he's in favor of the extra 30 days.
I understand, just trying to, just trying to.
I'm, it's not on my desk yet, but when he gets here, I'll be signing it and it'll have the 30-day in it.
Wonderful. We've had the motion seconded, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have passes.
Appeals. We have appeal of Gus Jordan on behalf of Cabana Royal, 401 Dolphin Street, concerning the planning commissions and now their application for plan and approval to allow an occupancy of over 100 in downtown development.
Move to grant the appeal.
This motion is seconded, any discussion?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Is this the time to discuss? Are you ready? We have the appeal and it's been spurred, moved and seconded, correct? I just want to make sure I'm okay, because I had trouble hearing, so, okay.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's been moved in second and now we're having the discussion. It's up to you, Miss Rich.
Okay, thank you so much. As a member of the Planning Commission, on your behalf, all of your behalf, I would like to just make perfectly clear that this topic, when it came before, the Planning Commission was very well debatable. was very well debated. As a matter of fact, I believe the vote was eight to four. So some people did feel it was appropriate, but way more than the majority of the board felt otherwise of the Planning Commission. The arbitrary and capricious would, just does not fit this particular item because it was, again, very rational, very well thought out. We heard from all sides, and the residents in the nearby area were very much opposed, and so was the church, which are two very important factors in that particular section of downtown. And their concerns were very valid. They were not unreasonable by any means. This is the third time this has been voted down by a Planning Commission. So it has a past history for having an application. It did have, I think, maybe 100 less than the last application. And the whole idea is that we were looking at the capacity. And it's the capacity in an area that really will have a negative effect. And again, I would reiterate that it was very much well debated and not at all capricious or arbitrary. This is not a good fit for the area. The building has quite a lot of potential and could be used in something that would be sustainable and more stable for the area. So that's my take of it. I've listened to this appeal very carefully, took all of the information that we all got, and my position has not changed on what I voted back a while ago on the Planning Commission. So if you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Discussion.
Mr. President, I'm just going to say something very short as I can. I don't believe that there was anything arbitrary or capricious about the decision, but that does not mean that I agree with the decision. They went through a process, they did debate it, they found the facts. We have a guy who bought a piece of property that, when he bought it, it was permitted for this type of use. And through the political process and through the zoning process, we have essentially made it so that he can't. And I'm not saying that the overall result is wrong. I just hate that when somebody buys a piece of property for whatever their intended use, I don't think they should have to declare it, but they should not lose it as long as they have membership. But that's our ownership. It's just unfortunate. I think it would have been a good project, but it simply is not going to meet the day in time in the opposition that's there. Maybe another place in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and I certainly appreciate those sentiments. I have considered those heavily as the representative of this particular area, but also have considered the sentiments and perspectives espoused by those who are already there, those who have invested heavily residentially, those that had the certain expectation that this segment of Dolphin Street would remain and retain some semblance of a neighborhood feel. And so I'll be supporting the community's perspective on this particular item. And but I also can understand and appreciate fully where you're coming from, Mr. Williams, and I understand they bought the property, and I'm hopeful that in the future, hopefully in the very near future, a reasonable resolution can be found.
Mr. President?
Mr. Davis?
Thank you. We have a planning commission, and I would say a very able planning commission, to take up matters such as this and to hear the facts and draw conclusions. We have been advised that in order to reverse those conclusions, we have to conclude that the Planning Commission acted arbitrarily or capriciously, and that that's a high burden to overcome, and that the decision would need to be clearly arbitrary and unreasonable. What we know here is that the Planning Commission had a full and fair hearing where they heard from both the proponents of the project and those that were opposed. And they, after hearing those facts, they came to conclusions based on the facts. Having examined the record and having heard from numerous entities, individuals in favor of the project, and numerous entities and individuals opposed to the project, I cannot conclude that these planning commission acted arbitrarily or capriciously in arriving at their decision. And so I will therefore vote to deny the appeal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? Absent any further discussion, all in favor? All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. It appears to me that it's unanimous in opposition. And thank each and every one of you for your consideration of this matter.
Request for waiver of the noise ordinance. We have two requests for May 23rd and 24th from 2:00 until 10:00 p.m. on Racine Avenue and on Gentilly Drive North.
Those are okay.
Moved.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded, ended discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We received communications from Reggie Hill and also supplements to his original communication to you all. Ordinance is held over. 50-014. Ordinance to amend Chapter 50 of the City Code to add a new article entitled Mobile Tourism Improvement District relating to the creation of a self-help business district.
So moved.
Second.
This would properly move to second, ended discussion. I just want to say that one of the pertinent articles of this legislation is the ability for the mayor and council to offer representation on the board that will be deciding how these funds will be expended. And I'll begin with my colleagues on the council to make an appointment as expeditiously as possible. I think that's going to be important. As we allow this process to move forward, it's also incumbent upon us to make certain that we're involved, that we have some level of representation, so that we all can be kept apprised as to how resources are expended, how well this legislation is working. And we will be formalizing that hopefully in an official appointment in the next couple of weeks. Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think to be safe on this one and the next one, too, y'all ought to declare that essential to the council function.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Probably moved and second. Is the end of discussion? Hearing not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Back to the ordinance.
Now, we're back to the original orders. We've had discussion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
All right, Spike, do the good things.
Resolution is held over 4200. Declare the structure at 15519 Patton Avenue of public nuisance and order it demolished.
Come move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is the end of discussion. Hearing not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcement?
Ms. Gregory?
Oh, thank you. The only announcement I have today is a reminder that this coming Saturday, there will be another food giveaway. We are working with Feeding the Gulf Coast, and Smith Memorial AME Church is the host for this. Registration begins at 10:00, but as what's happened in other food giveaways, people are there lined up at about 7:00, so everybody will be prepared. But there will be registration at Augusta Evans School, and then the actual food will be placed in vehicles at the church. So again, it is a first come, first served. And I'm just really appreciative of the volunteers from the church, as well as the Mardi Gras organization and others who have come together to help with this. I am providing funding from my discretionary funds to do this, like I did also with the Friendship Food Giveaway. So just very happy that I can be involved and to help ensure that those who are the most needy will be helped during this food giveaway. So again, registration starts at 10:00 at Augusta Evans School, and it is first come, first served. So if you know of anyone who is in need during this time, and there are a lot of people that know about this, and encourage them to come on out, and we will provide food for them. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. That's wonderful. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce that the gym floors at Figures Center and at Ducks Center have been completed. I went out to visit those two facilities, and the floors are simply beautiful. Can't wait until we open up where the citizens can come in and get a chance to see and play on those brand-new gym floors. We allocated money to close four ditches, two on East Hall Street, two on Wall Street. And those ditches are completed. And we started off with four ditches. We're closing those ditches, one ditch at a time. And next time, we'll close some more ditches. But we have finished the process on East Hall and Wall Street. And I would like to close, I would comment on the coronavirus. It's a lot of people out there who are still saying that it's fake, it's not for real. There are 328 million people in the United States. And in the last four months, 91,000 people have died from the coronavirus. To show you what that impact is, there are 1.3 million people in China, 1.3 million people in India. And when you add to that, so you're talking about 2.6 billion, 2.6 billion people between those two countries. We only have 328 million. And then you add to the 2.6 billion, all of the citizens in Russia, France, the UK, Nigeria, Australia, Japan, Israel, Bangladesh, Pakistan, Brazil. When you add all that together, the records show that 88,139 people died. When you add who died in all of those countries put together, only 88,139 people. You're talking about billions of people. We have 328 million people. We have already lost more than 91,000 people. So what is the difference? Why are we, why so many? We are losing so many, and it's just over 4,000 people died in China, $1.3 million. 1.3 million people. The difference is how we treat it. We, you know, we are slow to do what the medical officials have been telling us to do. I say they don't mind us opening back up, but those businesses that's going to open up, they're going to have to look out for their customers. They're going to have to consider putting masks on and, where possible, put gloves on. They got to do what they need to do. And that's the only way we're going to get a grip on it, is that we all do what we need to do. If we're in a group, if we're with a group of people, we need to have put our mask on. If we are shopping in any of these stores, we're going to have our mask on. And I know plenty of people are not doing that. That's why our numbers will continue to go up. Because people act like everything is normal, nothing is going on, that I don't see nothing. Therefore, there is nothing that is fake. That idea is not going to get us anywhere. So I'm appealing to all of our citizens to take care of yourself, be careful when you go out. Make sure you have your mask if you're going to be around people. When you get back home, make sure you wash your hands with soap and water and where ever possible, sanitize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Williams?
No, thank you. I just want to commend you on running such a fine, remote meeting, sir.
Well, I try when I can, Mr. Williams. I appreciate the commendation. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Monday is Memorial Day, and it has kind of slipped up on us. It's coming a week ahead of when it usually does. And we've got a lot of other stuff going on, obviously, with the coronavirus. But I hope all of us, all of us in the city of Mobile, county of Mobile, state of Alabama, United States of America, will stop a few minutes on Monday to think about the sacrifices that have been made by all the men and women who have served in our military to preserve our freedom, beginning with those men who won our freedom in the Revolutionary War almost 250 years ago. When we look at that army compared to the army we're able to place on the field today, there's absolutely no comparison. That army was led, General Washington had some battle experience, and some of the other generals had battle experience. But most of that army was composed of farmers and booksellers and merchants and people who had absolutely no military experience. And they had women and children back on the farms and no one to bring to sow the crops or bring the crops in in the fall. And they went up against the strongest, most powerful country in the world, Great Britain, which had a few years earlier in the Seven Years' War, what we call the French and Indian War, which was a global war, beat France and its allies across several continents. They had the strongest navy in the world. They had the strongest army in the world. And we went up against them in a long, bloody, seven-year war with insufficient resources, a weak and divided government, an untrained military, beat them and won our independence. And the men and women who have served in our military ever since then have followed on in that strong tradition. And the reason we're able to meet together like we do today, and the reason that our countrymen enjoy a government that they create and the decisions they make, is because of the sacrifices those men made 250 years ago and the sacrifices that the men and women that have followed them in our military since then have also made. So please, let's take some time on Monday to remember all those folks. Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and I certainly concur. Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. I would just like to announce a program that's going on at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, and that is from 2:00 to 4:00, and there's three dates, May 20th, June 3rd, and June 10th. And what they're doing is you have to drive up and you get what they're calling a blessing tote. They're also doing it at the Parkway Senior Center, the same exact days, only different hours. Theirs will be from 10:00 to 11:00, and it's Monday, I mean, May 20th, June 3rd, and June 10th. And this is a bag that will include a bagged lunch. I don't know exactly what it will involve, but also some items that you might find very helpful during this, I guess, pandemic that we're experiencing. So I don't know exactly what's in the bags, but I hope people will take advantage of it. And for the Connie Hudson Senior Center, I'd like to thank the foundation that- And for the Connie Hudson Senior Center, I'd like to thank the foundation that is helping to support this effort with a monetary commitment that they've made. So again, I hope that people take advantage of this. And I, too, would like to tell everyone also about the holiday that's coming up, which is Memorial Day, and it's one that did sneak up because it's normally the last, but this is the last Monday, but that's where it threw us off. And again, it is a solemn time, and it's, it's when we remember the people that gave the very highest sacrifice they could possibly give for our freedoms. So I hope people do reflect on it Monday when it's the time to do exactly that. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just bring the update on the groundbreaking of Baltimore Street. I know I announced on last week that I would be announcing the particular day and time of the great ceremony, but unfortunately, the contractor had hit a bump or two. The contractor had to acquire some land to place the milling equipment on to mill the street, and it has not really followed through all the proper channels with the city about getting the permit. Ask the administration to look into that a little bit more, or we can get it just all the moving. Was given the option as in going ahead and having a groundbreaking ceremony about putting some dirt out there and throw the dirt, but to me, that defeats the purpose. The purpose is that the street, you know, many residents, you know, had the feeling and been told that the street would never been, will be paved, and pretty much the street is going to rebuild. So milling the street and throwing asphalt is more important than throwing some dirt, to me. So we're going to postpone that date until the contractor can acquire the land properly and get all the correct permits, so they can bring the equipment out to mill those streets, but we could throw asphalt besides dirt. So as soon as they get that done, I will inform the residents in the, in the community and also the administration, so we can come on out and have a grand old, good old time in celebrating a milestone that's happening within our city. And I wish everyone a safe and happy Memorial Day also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and congratulations on achieving that milestone with Baltimore Street. I'm hopeful that in the very near future, the residents along Texas Street will be able to have a very similarly situated celebration. By way of, I haven't overlooked anyone, have I? Great. By way of announcements, I will be hosting the first of three community food giveaways in the Plateau Community on tomorrow in partnership with Feeding the Gulf Coast and the Yorktown Missionary Baptist Church. Dr. Christopher L. Williams is the pastor. Yorktown is located at eight fifty-one East Street. This will be drive-through only, and some three hundred boxes have, will be prepared for dissemination and distribution to those who are in need. And I want to stress that it is really for the needy and not the greedy. The first of three that we will be sponsoring, the next one will be at the Truvine Missionary Baptist Church, where Dr. St. Dave McQueen is pastor, and then we will come between the Down the Bay and Maysville communities and have a similar giveaway there. But again, make certain that you have a need. There are those who have food, deep freezes full of, of food that can make it through. That ain't quite, this ain't quite your situation. And if there are seniors in the area that need to have resources delivered, please contact my office so that we can get that information over to Pastor Williams in Yorktown so that we might be people to assist you as well. Want to thank Feeding the Gulf Coast. They have done an outstanding job in responding to the increased demand across this region, not just here in Mobile, but across the region. They've been a blessing to a number of families as they've have, have had impact with this coronavirus, and I want to thank them. I want to thank Marion Steinfels, who has done a lot of the lake work in getting these operations off the ground. Thank Dr. Williams and Dr. McQueen and, and every other pastor that has expressed interest in working with this effort so that we might make some difference in communities of need. That's, that announcement, I want to commend the administration for all of the work that they're doing, the unified command. Glad that the command is unified in addressing this virus, because it's still having impact. And I read a lot of commentary on Facebook, similar to Mr. Richardson, about those who would say that this is something to brush off, that it's not serious. Well, it won't really get serious, and hopefully that will never be the case. But in many instances, it won't get serious until you have direct impact. I lost my first church member as relation to this virus last week and having to deal with the family and making arrangements to memorialize such a young person to have lost his life connected to the virus. And so let's be vigilant. Anyone, whether it's me, Mayor Stevenson, Governor Island, they can stand behind some podium and tell you that you can do this, that, or the other. You have got to have common sense for yourself, because at the end of the day, none of those individuals are going to be there if you have to be on a ventilator. You have to have common sense for yourself and for your family. I'm not in a rush. We're having church in our parking lot. It's a well-appointed parking lot, and we have to have service there to the end of the year before we feel comfortable. I don't care what anybody says by going in. We have to feel comfortable because we are responsible for our own health and safety. And that's been, if you didn't know that, you ought to know it now, because the push now is to open up the economy. You got to look out for yourself, and that's my advice to all citizens of District Two and anyone else that's not in a rush to see the other side. And so that concludes my announcements. Any other, Mr. Mayor? If there's anything, anything else you'd like to offer?
Mr. Mayor's gone.
Okay, well.
To adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly seconded, ended discussion?
No.
If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.